Twenty-one, um, president or members, Mike Pierce and Nate Klein. We also have, uh, Chris Haney with us, um, and the mayor. Our topics of discussion are selling the SBA tower and zoning. Um, so I guess we'll just get started off with, uh, with the tower.
Okay, um. Yeah, as you know, I've sent that proposal out to you all and, um, we have discussed a property that we were looking at for city services. And the funding for that and I, this might be an option for us. Um, you know, to possibly be able to afford that cost. Up front here, you know, to help knock down that price on the total cost that we have to. Pay for that, uh, new location. So there's been some other thoughts about how, you know, these towers. I don't know how long they're going, if, if they may end up obsolete at some point. Um, but I know that we do have an ongoing revenue stream from it. Um, over the twenty-five years, I think it wouldn't, or fifty years, it would not add up. To what the cost that they're giving us upfront, but. Um, to know that this is going to continue to produce that revenue is up in the air as well. Especially with the small towers, um, popping up everywhere and five G towers. Um, but just wanted to kind of explore that with you all and see what if you had any thoughts on that as well. About maybe, you know, going through with this option. With the long-term easement, uh, providing them that property for that fifty-year easement. Um, and, you know, obtaining that amount, I think was. Hmm, five hundred and seventy thousand dollars that they would give us for the fifty-year term upfront. And we'd also still be able to collect some of the royalties they collect off of, um, you know, whoever. They allow to use the tower, cell phone providers, such like that.
Nate?
Mayor, I'm on board with the upfront, just taking into consideration, um, that amount. Um, I, I'd like to see maybe if you could go back and, and counter and see if you could get that up a little bit more. Um, but just taking into consideration not knowing fifty years from now from what the technology is going to be, the uncertainty of it. Um, the value of a dollar now is three times what it's going to be fifty years from now. Um, and, you know, being able to use that money for lots of, for a big project, which would be, uh, you know, we have, we've got a lot of things, uh, a lot of momentum going on right now, uh, that I think we, we could use that money. Um, to capitalize on, so. I'm, I'm, I'm in favor with it whenever you get, think it's a number where it needs to be, I'd be happy to sponsor the legislation, move forward with it.
Yeah, I was planning on trying to counter that, um, wanted to have the talks with you guys first, if we even wanted to pursue it. Um, or if we wanted to go with the traditional, um, payment that they provide. But, um, yeah, I definitely would like to try and counter it myself, but. Okay.
Sam, what are they giving us per year now?
Oh, let me look it up, Mike. I have it written down somewhere, but can't. It's been a while since I spoke with him. Um. Give me just a moment here.
I don't see that in this documentation.
Uh, there was, there was two, um. Yeah, there were two documents that I sent. One was that option. The other is to continue our lease that we leased to them, um. Wait a minute.
It looks like the lease is for five years, right?
Five additional terms, it's, it's twenty-five year lease typically.
Okay, twenty-five, and it says.
It expires.
Payment of twenty thousand dollars.
Uh, that's, that's just getting the lease done. I'm, I don't wanna, I wanna have the number, but I've, I'm pretty sure it was. On the ballpark of thirty-three thousand dollars a year. Um, I wish John were on here because he had those numbers. It would definitely, if, if you did this lease over fifty years, would produce. More money than that, obviously. The, the reason why they're offering us a upfront cost is, you know, to lock it in. Um. Let me see.
Well, if, if your numbers are thirty-three thousand a year. And that's one, one point six five million over fifty years.
Yeah, which there would only do a twenty-five year, um, on that.
But we could, you could talk that up to six hundred. Uh, I think I could be on board with that.
That's what I was hoping to, to do was get him somewhere around there, but I definitely will probably go a little higher just to see. Where we can go, because it, it is, it's gonna save them money regardless.
Chris?
Um, can, can we insert, I, and I don't know if this would be a deal breaker for them, but. Can we insert language into the contract that if they. Um, I guess no longer use the, the tower, or the tower becomes obsolete, that we could, that would be an early. I don't know, like an early. Lease, I, I don't know what it would state, but if, if, if they would no longer use that tower. Can we insert something in the contract that states that we retain that for the remainder of the fifty years of work? If they no longer provide their services through that tower?
Yeah, I, I like that, Chris. Um, if they abandon the tower, then it reverts back to the property of the city.
Yeah, and from what I understand from this, it's mostly, it's an easement. We pretty much just give them the rights to the tower, the property is still ours. But I, I would, we definitely have a lot more to sift through. I just wanted to know if this is something that we're willing to consider.
I'm, I'm on board with it.
Because I'm lazy, uh, where is this tower located, um?
It's right next to the water. It's like where the W I R O tower. Yeah, next to the water tower.
Nate?
Um. Uh, two things. I want to make sure that we're, we're not responsible for maintaining it. There's no language or anything like that in the contract, right?
Um, I, what I understand is the current lease would be what they go with. It's just that we are making amendments to. Allowing them to, instead of pay us yearly, they're paying us upfront at a much, obviously, it would be less over. That timeframe.
Yeah.
But yeah, this lease has been around, I believe, for a pretty long time.
Okay, I just want to make sure there was nothing in there that pinned us down for having to maintain it while they used it. Um, and then also, you know, if you, I don't know if Brigham's had a chance to look over it to make sure, you know.
No, 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 like that's, I said, this is kind of the beginning discussion. I wanted to see if you guys. This option, or if you wanted to just continue the original, because. I know at least John on his first, the first time we spoke to him, which has been a while ago, was going, oh, now you have this. Over all this amount of time. Unless you can negotiate that up, but I think he's kind of on board with this too, as he's talked about these towers becoming obsolete. Quite a bit here recently.
And then again, I know you guys get tired of me talking about inflation, but if you take. Five hundred and seventy thousand dollars at two and a half percent inflation rate over fifty years, that's one point seven million. So, yeah, I'm good with it.
Yeah. I'm just writing down some of the things. So, Chris, you were talking about retaining property if it, if they abandon it.
Yes, if, if, I guess it becomes obsolete or they no longer, I guess, have stake in that. Technology or whatever, the property would revert back to us to be able to do whatever we want to with it.
Okay.
We could, like, another company with the tower.
And then, um, and then just negotiation, which I was kind of planning on doing anyways. All right, anything else on this?
What, what is the technology that they use for the tower?
I'm, I'm pretty sure it's telecom, like, so it's like. Um, I don't want to quote who uses it, but I'm pretty sure it's like your Verizon, your AT&T.
Okay.
So we'd still, from my understanding, receive, it's broadband carriers, um. We would receive. Grantor shall be entitled to revenue share for the balance of the fifty-year term, which shall be twenty-five percent of the monthly base rent payments collected by SBA. Um, from Shenandoah Personal Communications LLC and any future broadband carriers. So that's an additional revenue on top of that, what I was talking about too, that we get. It's not as much. Um, but we'd still get that.
So, if, if I may, Nate, uh, a moment ago, you were, you mentioned the one point seven million. Uh, were you in, uh, so are you in favor of this, or are you saying that's going to be lost revenue?
No, yes, I am. You said, if you take thirty-three, if you take thirty-three thousand and multiply it by fifty, it was one point six five million.
Yeah.
Okay, but if you take five hundred and seventy thousand dollars right now, okay? Then inflationary dollars fifty years from now, that's one point seven million.
Okay.
So, in the end, if you took the money now, a dollar, a dollar today is worth more than a dollar tomorrow, trying to say.
Yeah.
So, yes, I'm in, I am in favor of the lump sum. Yeah.
Okay, I've got those written down here, SBA.
Again, I would like the mayor to try to talk them up north of six hundred thousand on that.
Yeah, I would. Yeah, I definitely will.
Okay.
Because they're going to be saving, they look at it in longevity, they're saving a ton of money. Uh, I, I understand exactly what Nate's saying there, but looking at it from the, the other side, they're saving tons of money. They're getting it at, at a bargain rate. Thinking in, in long-term, so.
And I'm sure that works for them quite a bit, because most small communities are, are pensioned for dollars all the time, so.
And the way technology changes, it wouldn't surprise me in ten years if that is an obsolete anyway.
Okay, now that's all I have on that. I'll come back to you guys when we're ready to. Move forward with it.
Okay, so the next, uh, item of discussion is zoning.
Okay, which we were working on. It's been a while, but I kind of want to. Share something with you that I've received. From Mr. Unger. Again, um, and it's, it continues to be the same. Um, issue. It's, um, hello, mayor, I saw where the rehab center opened up right in the smack dab middle of our downtown. This is so bad on so many levels. Is city council doing anything about zoning? Can this be made retroactive? Also, as a side note, is there a city? Planning Board or Commission that reviews all downtown restoration signage, et cetera? They should be reviewing the architectural plans for the Marlowe Building, so they don't destroy, destroy any architectural. Texturally significant features. I spoke with him actually on these, and actually, yes, we, I've had Susan submit to. That particular, uh, property owner, you know, request that we need to review. What they are doing, um, from what we understood in the beginning, though, that they were restoring it to its actual original, um, look. Um, but there's been, you know, a lot of talk, from not just him, but a lot of folks about this. Rehabilitation Center opening downtown. Um, it also contributes to our parking issue. I mean, I'll say that much at least, but that's something we've been dealing with before it came. Um, but for. He wanted to know if there was any plans to do anything about it. I know I had to explain to him it could not be retroactive, that. Could create for some abusive powers or any type of unjust type things going on. From elected officials, if we did things like that.
Nate?
Mayor, I, I believe we left off, um, Craig was kind of leading the charge as far as updating our, uh, zoning map. Um, we recently established the new residential R one A area. Um, to, um, address some of our neighborhoods. Uh, and I believe, you know, I, we asked Craig also in those meetings to. Um, but we need to address that with the, with the downtown and, and review our current zoning for that and, and. Update that, so as, I, I, I'm just, that's how we left off as far as I, I know, and we discussed that in the council meeting as a whole. So, um. This is more, I think it's more than what we're going to be able to solve tonight. Think we need to, uh, reach out to Craig and again, have another council meeting, the whole, just to address solely zoning. On both downtown and the residential that we discussed.
Yeah, I agree. It, it, it really re- requires all of us, everyone that's been involved, I believe, to. Um, we need, if Susan's on here or not, I think, no, that's DLC as user. Um, but we need Susan as well and. Um, you know, but we do, I think, it's been what, a couple of months since that's went by and. It is a long process to get this done too, so I think we need to get the ball rolling on it. Because it's, it's a lot of the calls that I get are about zoning, it seems to be these days, or it's not, it's not necessarily about zoning, but it's. Things that zoning allows for. Um.
Do you, do you have any recommendations right off the bat to consider going into a meeting like that for? Down, the downtown, uh, any language or anything proposed? Or just something you want to work on going into that meeting?
Um, it's not so much what to include in it, but right now it's what it doesn't include, like. The only things limited in the downtown business district is manufacturing, storage. Of hazardous chemicals, I believe. That's about it. Mostly pertaining to storage, manufacturing and hazardous chemicals, storage, so. There definitely, I think, that's very loose, you know, um, it's just a little bit looser than the industrial. Um, and I feel like downtown is our heartbeat of our city. Um, and it's kind of where people will go to get an impression here. Obviously, we have some other, like the gateway as well, but it's, it is our downtown. It's where all the operations thrive through.
Chris?
Uh, I agree with that, uh, um, one, one question I would have is what? Are we? Are we trying to say that, that they would need to be in the high zones, the industrial zones, or would we create a separate zone? For things like that, kind of like health? Um, fringe health services or, or, I mean, can we, can we create a zone? That specifically puts them in one part of town and that, that's it, or, I mean, how? What, what would you guys propose? I know I'm not on the strategic planning committee, but I've also. Received numerous, numerous, uh, comments, phone calls, messages about. For zoning in particular and, and this. Issue, um, i- i- is it legal to, to just have a specific? Medical zone in, in your community, or?
I think there's.
Where are your guys stopped?
I think there is. Or like hospitals or health department, because there is that zone, still exists there. Um, but I think it's more so defining what you want downtown to be. It's not about excluding one group. It's just about what can be there instead of what can't be there, I think. I think that's the way it really should be is.
Okay, so, so we're, we're looking at.
Kind of like, you look at the rest of like, where R one, you're only allowed to have a single family home. That's pretty.
Right.
I, um, you know, instead of it saying. Only people with this type of structured home or, or only these types of homes aren't allowed in there.
So what we kind of need to work on before this meeting is language. For the downtown zone, instead of trying to solve a problem and, and make it a zone, just work on the language. And what is owned there right now, correct?
Yeah, I don't think you, and I think that's one thing, like, yeah, you, I don't think you would want manufacturing in downtown. I don't know where you'd put it in a historic building or historic area. Manufacturing is for an industrial zone. Um, same as hazardous material, materials and stuff like that, and I don't see any purpose for that downtown. Your downtown's for your retail restaurants, you know, shops, services. I mean, that is a service they're offering there, tech, you know, so it's. It, I think it's.
Funeral homes.
Funeral homes.
Yeah. Um, one thing, I'm pretty well versed on the residential zones. But I, I haven't really, and I don't know, I don't know that I've seen the pamphlet on. The other zones. Is there any way you could have Susan email council a copy of this industrial?
Do you have your, a book of ordinances?
Um, yeah, it's on my council desk. I've got, it's.
All right, well.
Five or six hundred pages.
Dad, let me, let me remind you of some money well spent in two ways. You could go to our new city website. On the city council page, and then you could go to the American Legal, or it's the City Council Ordinances, and it.
The codified ordinance.
I think it's section eight. And you can find all of that in there. I think it's eight. And yeah, so they've updated all the codified ordinances.
Awesome. So now, if if somebody has a question, because I've been coming up to your office and and getting.
Now, the mapping map comes out.
Everything to give them to you.
It comes out, and I think eight different sections still is what I've been told, but, and I don't know how we fix that, because it's such a large. Um.
Right.
He's even Brad, I think, would have been the one that included that. If if it's on, I was talking to someone who asked about it the other day, and I said, have you been on the website lately? Because it's a new website, um.
Yeah.
Streets, utilities, public services codes, business regulation. I think it might be ten, actually. No.
I just gotta say, I'm looking at it, chapter eight sixteen, it has to deal with fortune tellers.
That's funny. The city of Ashland was asking me about that the other day. We have one. Um. Utilities, other.
Fortune tellers.
It's part fourteen, I believe.
They're not allowed, not allowed to engage in the business of palmistry, phenology, or the telling of fortunes without obtaining a license. Past August first nineteen fifty.
Wonder if they could help us with cell towers?
Yeah, sorry, I don't know that off the top of my head. I'm looking.
The fortune teller license goes through, uh, John, so we might want to make him aware of that.
Oh, I see where I was seeing. Title versus part is different. Planning and zoning, part twelve, right in front of me. Yeah, um.
That's part twelve.
Every district, so title four.
Title four zoning code, yes, it has all those.
Every specific.
Yep, that's all.
Okay. So that might be something we all just want to, that's our homework, is title four. Until the next meeting.
I agree, agree.
I will, I'll be seeing Craig tomorrow at the ball fields, so I'll ask him if he could. Send out a feeler for council of a whole meeting just solely for zoning. And and see if we can put that together, and then we can kind of put our thoughts. With the the downtown and our next steps for implementation for the residential, since we have a new zoning established.
Yeah, if you, when you talk to him, can you ask him any day but next Wednesday, please?
Not next Wednesday.
Right.
Can, can we also, well, this may need to be in another meeting, but I'd also, while we're looking at the zoning, looking at maps and things like that. Maybe include the Dora Initiative. I don't know if that'd be too long with me or not.
So what?
We have maps holding up and everything else like that.
At least let's get it knocked out. It's something, even if we're still waiting on the, you know, the Vernon Street project. Um, what, yeah, you guys all familiar what Dora is? The designated outdoor refreshment area. Um, mapping that out, making sure, I think Brigham was involved in that first conversation. I don't, if I remember correctly. But it had to be, it was like.
I have the Google map, um, that we kind of proposed, drawn out, and send that out at a time. You want a separate meeting for that, or what are you, what are you thinking?
Um. Yeah, because I think that could get done relative, we've kind of mapped it out, right, already?
Yeah, it'll, it'll need some tweaks, but yeah, um, and you're wanting to move forward with that before Vernon Street?
Yeah, I mean, it's something we can.
Yeah, I mean.
Establish at least downtown. I believe the depot is opening up soon. Um, Malini's, Toraloco, Inzone, all of the, please don't let me forget, Elks, Wise Guys, all of them are downtown, you know. That that could probably, which I don't know that we had Park Avenue on there, but Elks would probably be a good addition to that with Wise Guys being in there now too.
Yeah, we hadn't, I think we had north, north and south of Park.
Okay, and it went to the riverfront, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, definitely want to include the riverfront on that.
Yeah, I don't, I I feel like we could go ahead and do that now to help benefit businesses, um. Especially this summertime, it'd be a good option for them and kind of start, you know. Getting control of it at least, then go ahead with the vern, I definitely want to go ahead with the Vernon Street project. Just think we should go ahead and do that while it's an option. Hopefully it doesn't go away.
I think one of the, one of the challenges we had was, you know, finding the organization to. Kind of spearhead it as far as. Um. You know, ordering the cups. Just the organization of it, marking them, uh, marketing, the whole. Walking area, all that stuff.
Well, with friends being right here on, you know, third Vernon area. If we included Third Street and Vernon Street, and I mean, that might, we'd have to run it by them and see if they're op, open to it, you know.
I think it's, I think it, I mean, it's a little more logistics to it than. Just drawing a map. I mean, you actually have to have somebody kind of operate it, so if they'd be willing to do it, that'd be great. And the what, you know, the 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 seminar I sat in with is like, you know, they'll, they they can. Uh, they're in charge of the cup and printing the cup and distributing it to those establishments and. Uh, they might mark them up a certain po, certain portion so that they can market that.
And it could be something for Irons and Alive as well, um.
Right, it could be, yeah.
Especially with them having the concert series. I mean, I can reach out to both organizations.
I think we need to have somebody on board to be ready to implement it. And and be in that, be in that conversation too, whenever we have that, I think.
And there is revenue collect in it for them, right? So.
The cup, the cup, the cup, the cup's where they collect the revenue. Like, let's just say you buy a cup for. Um, five cents, and they charge. Seven cents a cup to the establishment. They take the two cents and they use part of it for. Administering it and part of it for advertising or whatever. Whatever, I'm just throwing out some numbers, whatever they charging for it, you know?
Yeah. All right. Yeah, let me reach out to some folks and see who. Um, if there's any interest there, and then I can get back to you about when we want to start looking. At implementing. I think we should have that group on board before we discuss it again too. That way they know what it is, and they know. Exactly where it's going to be and planning behind it and our goals of it.
I think you might want to have possibly Pam on 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 it too, just uh. Op, open container wise, and then also maybe Mike, because we might have to post some signs.
Yeah, and that's something I still want to talk about at another time is street signage, wayfinding for the city. I've been in talks with some retail strategy groups that kind of do that, come in and help you. Define your city and find the things that you're lacking and recruit businesses as well. And that's one thing they've brought up is uh wayfinding. Whether it be from the bridge telling you downtown this way, gateway this way, riverfront that way. Kind of like you see when you get into Huntington, you know, in some areas, they have like a bunch of wayfinding signs.
Like no trucks off this street?
Yeah. Truck out. We have those. They just don't pay attention.
Okay, all right.
Echol facilities, that sort of thing.
Yeah. All right.
All right.
Appreciate it. I got a lot to do. I'll get back to you guys on the. S B A stuff and the door stuff, and you let me know about the zoning meeting.
Okay, will do. Not next Wednesday.
All right.
All right.
Thank you.
See you.
Yeah.
Shino adjourned.
Thanks, guys. Have a good, good evening.
All right.